Okay. I'll call this meeting with the County Planning Commission order. We have a quorum. If everyone will look at their February minutes, we'll go over those if those approve.
I move we approve.
Been properly moved and...
I second.
And seconded that we approve the minutes as presented. Is there any further discussion? Being known, we shall proceed to vote. All those in favor of the February 2013 minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Moving on down the agenda to our first item under subdivision plat report. I guess we would go to number two, family. Or do you want to review the plat report from this last month? Number two, let's do that. Looking at page two, is there any questions about that, starting with Grantham? Charles Grantham, Grossclose, McNeil, Pierman, and on the back page, Williams. Turn around, Tom, it looks really good. Okay, if there's no further thoughts or observations about the plat report, we'll move forward to the McNeil family subdivision. Mr. Baer?
Mr. Chairman and Planning Commission members, what you have here is the McNeils did a family subdivision to create three lots to be conveyed to members of the family. As you can see, they are relatively large lots, 20 acres, 17 acres, and 28 acres. And they kept a 20-acre parcel as a residual. This is off of Berea Road, and in fact, years ago, the planning commission had previously done a subdivision to sort of combine some of these lots, lots together, and adjoining owner, lot line revision on this front part many years ago. Basically, family provided a 20-foot right-of-way to a state-maintained road, met the terms of the ordinance.
Okay. And that, they have to remain this way for five years, right?
Correct. And the landowners worked quite a bit with the Virginia Department of Transportation on their site distance at Berea Road. It's in a curve there and some hill work, and they, before they even came to see us, they had gone and worked with VDOT and actually, as Castle indicated, they received a commercial entrance for this property.
Good. It seemed proactive.
Because it's three or more lots.
Any other questions? Okay, moving forward, we take no action. Charles Grantham?
This plat is a re-subdivision of two lots that was originally part of the Smokey-Simonis subdivision on Cedar Springs Road and Crigger Road. You can see Track Two, the fronts on Crigger Road is 14.862 acres. The property line, as you can see, was back over to the left there, lot line to be vacated. Basically, he took his lot that fronted on Trout Farm Road, added additional acreage to it from the other lot, and now has these two lots as shown.
Any questions on the Grantham property? Okay. Moving forward. Pierman?
This property is located right across from 94 there at Fort Cheswell, right below the high school. North of the high school, I say below, but north of the high school there. We had worked on this, we had a previous division of this property years back where they had done this. This time, what they did was just, you see the, you see the two lots, and the vacated lot line is a dashed line that runs up between them. They basically just took the acreage behind the smaller lot, added it to the lot to the right, and did adjoining owners division there, or a lot line revision there.
So there's two lots, correct?
Yes. You see the, starting there at 52, you see the house down next to the road?
Yes, sir.
That was a lot there that ran from there all the way back to the very far back property line.
All right.
Right next to it, where you see the L5 along the road.
Okay, yes.
That was one long rectangular lot that ran all the way to the back property line.
Okay, all right.
They basically created a new line to make this small lot, 20.586 acres, took all the residual behind it and added it to the L5 lot that was there. Lot line revision, didn't change frontage, just changed the acreage on the two lots.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Next plat. Williams? Yes, or is it Pierman?
Grossclose.
With Vicki Williams. Plat prepared by Hurt and Profit. This was an existing lot, and on the backside of it, you see where it says barn on the lower side of the lot.
Yes.
See, there's a lot line that ran across that, says lot line hereby vacated. They added this property in the back of it to the lot to the front, so...
Okay, just a lot line revision.
Adjoining owner, lot line revision, yes, that's all it was.
All right. Is, all right. Ridge Avenue, is that the one where the water tower, you go out by the water tower?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right.
So it's going out by the water towers before you get all the way back to the train tracks. It's on your right.
Okay.
There.
All right, any questions for the Williams? Okay, so I can move forward. Randy? All right, we'll make sure I don't want, going faster than what we need to. Okay, we have an adjoining owner, Grossclose on page seven.
The property here is located along Lee Highway and Pineview Drive, heading out on 11 West. The, there's a lot of small lots that you see there that are just primarily shown in there for reference. The big tract of this property is this 24.91 acres. That is the large tract that you see, that is remaining tract. And then you see the new lot to the north of that 24-acre tract that has a couple frame barns shown on it. They cut out that .475 acre tract and conveyed it to the adjoining owners, Donnie and Tracy Gamble, and kept the residual.
Where is this exactly on 11?
Where the cell tower is, before you get to Buc-E's.
Right after the four lane, turns back to two lanes.
Okay.
Four door retreat.
All right, all right.
Right there before you get to where the house recently burnt, right there before the old Duke's Restaurant.
Primal.
And I think their primary goal was to get those barns and everything with the property to the front of it, is what they were trying to do, so... It was already a little bit weird shaped. Obviously, you can see they have frontage on Pineview Drive along with frontage on the Lee Highway.
That is a weird...
Mr. Chairman, that's all the subdivisions we had to report on this month.
Let's discuss this house encroachment detail. I know it doesn't pertain to it, but sort of is, but I wonder how long that frame house attached garage has been there?
I do not know.
Went right on the lines of, she was heading towards there?
What he's talking about is on, if you look on Pineview Road.
Yes, where it says house encroachment detail A.
Yep, and you see the detail at the bottom of the plat.
And the corner is five inches under the bill.
Well, it's 5/100ths of a foot, a little over half an inch.
Any other questions? All right, being now moving forward, we have a family subdivision brochure.
Mr. Chairman, what you have there is, as you are aware, with the, part of our goal with the revisions to the subdivision ordinance was trying to, but simpler language in there, more exact process and procedures and all that. One of the supervisors has been talking about brochures, just like I showed you the Progress Park brochure there earlier, of general information that could be handed out by supervisors, that staff could hand out to individuals. We had a handout before, but I will, I will agree, it was, it was confusing. We had everything on one handout. So lot line revision didn't pertain to you, you were still reading about it. So what we try to do is just highlight the basic things. If someone wants to come in, this is what a family subdivision requires. Michelle, Miss Castle, put this one together. Miss Castle is working on the one for like lot line revision, for adjoining owner, work on one for minor subdivisions, major subdivisions, that way individuals have it. Welcome you all to look at it, welcome input, especially from Mr. Wright. You can't cover everything, and the goal is to, is to keep it simple. Show the general rules, which, you know, when you're talking to most people, this is what's required, this is what your setbacks are, this is what your lot size are, you know, septic permits, all of that, and obviously encourages them to come in and have a meeting with us. But it's, it's something that the supervisors can have, because family subdivision is probably something they get asked more about than any other type of subdivision.
At first glance, I think she did an outstanding job. It's a lot less intimidating than trying to look through the ordinance.
Yep.
Get all the information out of it.
Looks nice, Michelle. I would probably instead of the two people type thing down here, I'd probably put some sort of animal, cow, something that would have been more...
I tried to get enough verbiage in there to get rid of the two people, but...
Yes, it does, I guess you could...
That's what she described to me. I didn't pick that up either, Eric, but it was family, that was...
Okay, got it. Okay. Any questions about our family subdivision brochure? All right, we'll open up the gallery now for citizens' time. Everybody can wave at the camera. Being that there are no citizens, we will continue on with new business under the March-April calendars, page nine. Any questions? Okay, we'll move forward to the budget request for fiscal year 2013, 2014. Michelle's worked on this. Basically, we don't have to go down through it line by line. I guess I do want to bring up a couple things under item 43100, professional services, That's for the comprehensive plan. Is that still on tap for July of this year? I remember asking in January, what, what was, what was our timetable? I know last year, we could have worked on it, and again, it was placed, delayed. Okay, so it is going to be funded?
We have a meeting this week with Mount Rogers to have some initial discussions about it and go through some of the information. Obviously, it's subject to budgetary approval, but I agree with Dr. Howesman, with, with changes and with VDOT input and what VDOT wants to see in the comprehensive plan, I feel we are going to have to proceed this year with doing an update of the comprehensive plan.
Will it be more, because I see on here possible countywide survey. To me, that's more major than minor, because we kind of discussed it at one point. Are we to assume that, and what timetable will we have to complete the task?
Well, I'll, once we meet with Mount Rogers and have a little bit of information about that, what costs are involved, what's been proposed and what they're offering, what cost would be for these type of surveys, you know, and going through the different discussions of what success they've had in other locations with online surveys, or using the different formats and tools that are out there now to come up with things. So, I cannot tell you if it's going to be as in-depth as your 1996, 97 one, that was all the surveys and all the input and all the committees and all those things, so...
Okay. All right, just kind of curiosity, what's going to be coming down the pipe?
Would you, are you promoting that, not promoting that, based on your previous experience? And if you'll explain that to the rest of them, because they don't, none of the rest of them were involved with that.
Whenever it was in back, back in the 90s, we divided up the planning commission into different subcommittees, and those subcommittees were assigned to a board supervisor's member. And there, those subcommittees were then assigned to a Mount Rogers Planning District person, and we set, like, I was agriculture and transportation. And we would set our own set of meetings up, through staff, and we had VDOT come in and make comment about what upcoming transportation needs were. There again, we, we talked mainly about the interstate, the widening of Interstate I-81, the corridor, which it's been 14 years and it's still hasn't done it, but anyway. And then each, each commission member was, was chair of a committee. And then we took those, Mount Rogers compiled all that information, we brought it together. Somewhere in there, we developed a countywide survey that we sent out to all residents through the mail. Sadly to say, I'm thinking less than 10% were ever, we ever really got them back, but those were compiled again by the community college, we worked with them to get the actual... But it involved each planning commission member, it involved each board supervisor's member and staff and Mount Rogers. So it was a more comprehensive, comprehensive plan. Since that time, the ones that I have worked on have been more, we go over the comprehensive plan word by word, letter by letter, and make changes and take suggestions from board supervisors and then that direction. So when you talk about countywide surveys and $25,000, I just kind of wondered, the other one, it does take a lot of time, six months minimum, I would think, maybe more.
Yeah, the last one we did, we worked with Sherry Hawthorne at that point in time. She wasn't on the planning commission at that time, and she helped take what we had, helped rewrite it, and then we went and had three or four meetings at elementary schools and high schools to try to get input. But once again, it was limited to community participation in those meetings. It's just, you know, trying to build up support and interest is difficult to do with those things.
You have to have a fiery issue that will bring people out.
Mr. Chairman, I remember you talking about the low rate of return.
Yes, sir.
They said our rate of return was probably above average.
I just remember it was somewhat dis, I thought it was disappointing, but...
You need to incorporate zoning into it somehow, that'll draw everybody.
That, that, that word, Mr. Wright, will create the buzz.
I think Dr. Howesman mentioned it at one of the meetings.
I, I thi, did I remember that? Maybe you did.
I think this time, you will see some more interest, and I'm merely speculating here, but just in other localities, sustainability, mentioned in comprehensive plans, is a buzzword like zoning right now. And sustainability is taken in different terminology by some people than others. And so I think when you get into it, and as you have some of these, I do think you will get some input on that. I could be wrong, but just based on some of these others that have been reviewing their plans, there's a strong interest in, in making certain that local governments aren't following you in charters, you know, and that's, you may get some input on those items.
And, you know, when and if we do start working on this, we can, we will have work sessions. If we can work it, work it to where we can have a regular meeting and then work a couple hours on the, on the comprehensive plan, there will be times where we will have to possibly have additional meetings per month, and then, like I say, public hearings and that sort of thing, so...
And we'll, we'll keep you informed as our discussions go on. And our goal is, you know, it needs community input. It needs to have, it needs to have a lot of involvement.
You would probably get more participation out of a Facebook survey than you would a paper, piece of paper.
And personally, possibly yes, and the younger, more computer savvy, but I can tell you that my parents will fill out a survey, a paper survey.
I understand that.
Yeah, there's generational issues there of...
They will, they will fill one out, so...
But like I said, low participation, people get it in the mail, they just throw it in the mail pile and they just ignore it. Now, if it's up on the Facebook and they see it, they would want to click, 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 and hit send. It's convenient.
Or if, you know, if there was $5 attached to the return of every survey, I think that that would probably entice more people to do it. Right? I'm going to catch that off. All right, moving forward. This, okay, number 43840, purchase of service, that's the regular assessment for Mount Rogers Planning District. Okay. All right. Any other questions about the budget request for 13, 14 for the planning commission? Do we need to adopt? So therefore, I would entertain a motion if there's no further discussion, the adoption of this document.
I move we adopt the budget request for 2013, 14.
You properly moved.
Seconded.
And seconded that we adopt the fiscal budget, budget request for fiscal year 2013, 14. Is any further discussion? Being known, we shall proceed to vote on the proposed budget request. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right. On page 11, we have a wind energy letter that was sent to the board, and I have a letter back from the board on March 9th, dated March 9th, and it said, "At February 26th meeting, the board took the following actions concerning the planning commission request. They renewed the recommendation on wind energy ordinance and requested county attorney draft an ordinance for consideration." So that's moving forward. And the only other question I have here is, they also renewed the Gutton Park Agricultural and Forestry District. How long, how long did they extend it for? Please tell me it was 10 years?
Did not state a timeframe, and that was Michelle's question to me today when she got this notice, so I think it's, by default, it automatically goes to a four-year. And this is only two landowners in the Gutton Park Ag and Forestry District.
I just, I know the hassle it is to renew those. I just know the hassle it is to renew those. I like seeing them extended for 10 years. 10 years passes very quickly.
Chairman, no.
Just a point of interest. Sir?
Letter from Mr. Dalton that's dated March 9th, which hadn't happened yet.
Yeah, noticed that.
It's also 2012.
Well, that's 2012.
Gracious, it is. Oh, wow. I didn't catch that for you. It's already happened, a long time ago.
Yeah, it's happened a long time ago.
The date that the meeting that they took action is correct, and it's saved in the bottom as 3/113. I think it just got the date missed on it.
Okay. Any other items that need to come before the agenda before we go to the county report? Dr. Howesman, it's all yours.
Well, just a couple of things. One is, yeah, as you, as you know, with the letter that's dated wrong, you know, the board did listen to the request to put together a ordinance on the, on wind energy, which everybody thought was a good idea. And so we've asked Scott Foddy to start working on that and to look at some examples and that sort of thing. The other thing that may be of interest is that we, we voted to ask, you know, Congress not to include Wood County in the National Heritage Area. You know, while everybody is supportive of the crooked road, we were not supportive of the national, you know, making it a national heritage area. And got an email, and I can't remember who the guy, maybe it was the Henswood guy, but anyway, he kept sending out an email saying, you know, 19 county area. And Salil, you know, emailed him to let him know again that Wood County wanted to be withdrawn from that. So now I think he's saying an 18 county area, so.
Have not some other counties withdrawn also from this? I got the impression Smith County was withdrawn.
I don't know if they've taken any action. You see, we actually are a little bit ahead of it because they told us that they would be asking for letters of endorsement, what, in March and April? I think somewhere like that. So we just went ahead because we just, you know, being a bit bared it, plus the fact that, you know, we really didn't, you know, didn't like it too much. So we just went ahead and did that. We had a meeting with the JIDA, Mr. Bear, when was that?
Last Thursday.
Last Thursday, yeah. And Mr. Mike Loomcule from the Virginia Department of.
Economic Development, yep.
Was there, and he had talked about how they're marketing Lot 24. And he assured us that Wood County has the premier site in the state of Virginia right now for, you know, for major issues. And I also told him that I love home run, but I would take the base hit. So I asked him how aggressively they were marketing the other pads that we have out there. And he said, you know, that was in a different division from him, but that they were marketing those, but there were a lot of, there was a lot more competition for those size pads and industrial sites. But again, he, he said that Wood County has the premier site in the, in the state of Virginia. Other than that, Mr. Bear, do you know anything else?
And maybe this doesn't pertain, but I somewhat think it does. How does, there was some legislation just passed, state of Virginia, on the fuels tax and that sort of thing. How, how will that impact us? I mean, they, they did away with the 17 and a half cents? Or at one point, Salil, I was in another meeting, he made a comment that there was a possibility of a one cent just for locality or something, but they did not pass that, correct?
I don't have all the details, but, you know, they did away with the 17 and a half cent tax, but they went to a wholesale tax that the retailers pay, which obviously would be passed on. And that's a percent, so as the price of gas fluctuates, instead of being a flat 17 and a half cents per gallon, you will see that impact as well. In general, what I have seen is the Northern Virginia and the Hampton Roads provisions that they put in there for additional taxes and things that would go towards addressing their issues. The pundits say will lead to ultimately a tax increase on the citizens up there. The governor had been pushing this as being, his original plan is a revenue neutral plan. Meaning in general, most citizens would be paying more in sales tax, but what they save in gas tax, it should be revenue neutral on, on the citizens. They are saying in Northern Virginia Hampton Roads, it will in fact be a tax increase, but to help them pay for the roads and their additional needs up there. In our area, it is intended to be more of a, a revenue neutral. Your sales tax goes up, but your gas tax comes down.
But in the same sense, if, and help me out, I'm not 100% on all this, but sales tax went from 5 to 5.3, correct? I think that's what I heard.
I think that's correct.
They did away with the 17 and a half cents, but they added it on the wholesale level. So the wholesale marketers will wholesale that gas, but they'll just jack that, that price will just be passed on to us again, right?
But it's not, and it's not 70 and a half, it's a percentage, and I can't, it's 3 and 1/2 or 3.
3%, I think.
Yeah.
And 6% on diesel fuel.
I thought they left the sales, I thought they left the sales tax on diesel fuel.
I just remember what I read in the article.
Well, I just kind of wondered how that was going, whether we would gain any of this. I was hoping we would gain some transportation money for rural roads and.
Well, you, the funding package and everything does actually include some funding that comes down for that. But there's a caveat on it that is troublesome. There is, there is money provided for bringing roads up to hard surface standards, state many standards. But the roads that it can be applied to has to meet a 400 vehicle per day road count. Which I've already been talking to a couple of citizens.
Sure, knocks out a lot of rule.
Yeah. I had a citizen call me Sharon's Drive. Sharon's Drive is on our six-year plan kickoff list. It was the roads that we had to take off the six-year plan several years ago, and we put on a list that this is what we would add them back in. Sharon's Drive is on there. And he called me to find out, he heard that there was some additional money coming down. I pulled up on the internet, you can look at VDOT road counts, if you just Google it, it'll come up. And it's got a column on the spreadsheet, AADT, the average daily traffic count. Sharon's Drive, the three sections of it was like 110 on one of them, 90 on another, and 117 on the other, something like that. So it's barely a quarter of the requirement for 400 vehicles per day. So that's going to be troublesome for rural areas. We've got to see if there's anything we can do to get VDOT to lower that standard for us to be able to apply the money towards some of those projects. On the positive side, there is money in there for the 81-77 overlap, particularly where 77 North comes into 81 South, where we get all the backups through there. The first phase they want to do is it's currently two lanes going across the bridge on 77 North and funnels into one. They want to make that two lanes all the way down, keep it at two lanes on 81. So you have four lanes on 81 out past the current Fort Chisel-Max Meadows exit.
Okay, so that would, yeah.
In other words, try to keep the funnel moving faster than not have all the backups. They will admit that is the biggest problem in southwest Virginia on interstates is that area right there. Holidays and every Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah. It's a hard flow.
Well, at the time.
Yeah, I'm sure at the time it was probably.
Traffic count, but things have grown since then.
This is true. Any other questions? Dr. Howesman, anything else, or?
About the General Assembly's liquor-by-the-drink 1,500-foot interstate. Yeah. That passed. And, yeah, we expect that to go into effect. And I think that there are already some, some landowners that are trying to talk to some, you know, some major restaurants and hotels or motels, you know, to talk to them about, you know, coming in to that area.
I saw where Smith County did it by the exit, certain exits, and it passed.
Yeah. Well, I think Smith County was the first one to really, Annie B. was going to put it in for Smith County, and then Wood County sort of piggybacked on, onto that, but expanded it a little bit because of the service roads going down. So, you know, 1,500 feet back on either side of, you know, the service roads.
Just service road, or is it interstate 1,500 feet? So if it's 1,500 feet from service road, that's.
I'd have to look at the language. I'm thinking it's 1,500 feet from the edge of the interstate right away, but it's serviced by the service road.
All right, within that we encompass.
But I wonder what that's more of, is it some extra change, a wait-and-see attitude to wait till the construction's done? When they start the construction, I'm just wondering.
Highway construction?
Yeah, on 81-77, whether that would be a factor in them delaying even doing that to them. Because they don't want to buy lock, and VDOT comes and says, well, I want to take 100 feet of it.
Well, it also goes down below, you know, 77.
Yeah, it goes all the way to.
Red porch.
Goes down to exit, what, 86? From mile marker 75.
Mile marker 85, 75 to 86 or 87.
86, 87, yeah.
So it's just a corridor that they have.
It basically starts at the town limits and goes to Puyallacan.
Okay.
And if you think about it, when you drive through that area, there are not many residents in that 1,500-foot strip on either side through there. The most you have is on the south side of interstate between Exit 77 and 80.
We should have asked for a bubble around Exit 24 on 77.
Well, in all honesty, if, if something like this is, you know, is passed now, I mean, it would be hard, you know, not to pass it in the same county in the same circumstances, you know, at a different location.
Okay. Anything else?
I guess the other day while I was meeting back here, I knew you were meeting out here. And we've got the industrial development update, I guess, is there any update on the Ag Expo committee group that's been meeting?
Yes, I can, county graciously granted us the use of their engineering firms to evaluate six different sites in the county based on the amount of grade work that would have to be done, based on the amount of length of driveway excess road, based on the number of parking places that each site could, could, we could get out of each site. And then the county just more or less laid it back into our lap to evaluate those three, those six sites. And now there was no money promised for any of it. But we do know that of those six, there was a couple that were kind of blatantly turned down by the engineering firm. Probably the one in Fort, the one in Fort Chisel High School and the one in Max Meadows were turned down just because of grade work and one's in a flood plain, who had to have a considerable amount of field material moved in. The other sites are still viable and basically waiting to see what we get back from landowners as to what they want for those properties. We have an idea, but to nail it down. And this was just cost estimates on grade work and that sort of thing. That's as far as we've gotten. Don't really have anything to report as far as. Engineers in the county turned it back over to the group to, to work on some more. Hopefully, by the next round of tobacco commission grants, we'll have something to submit. County has indicated that they would help us in the rent-riding, possibly, getting those submissions done. That's all I have to report on that. Anything else? I apologize for walking in on your meeting. The last two minutes we had, we had them in there, and I just assumed that we were in there again.
That wasn't any problem. I knew what you were trying to do.
Bam, okay. Anything else, gentlemen? Then I would entertain a motion.
Chairman, I view that we adjourned.
Then properly moved and.
I'll second.
And seconded that we adjourned the Plan Commission meeting for March. All those, is there any further discussion? All those in favor with motion 65, sing aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now shut off the television channel. Thank you.